Yep.
All right.
Welcome to the April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are available at the back if somebody wants to have a conversation. So we will call the order of the meeting and we will have a moment of silence and Deb will lead us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Deb. I will have a review and approval of the agenda.
So move.
A motion by Dur or by Drews and a second by Hatcock to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act upon non-coverational routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Consent agenda contains the following items, A through I, and I would ask that the commission, if you had anybody, any of the items that you would like to move, remove from the agenda? Nope, seeing none. How about anybody from the audience? Is there anything that you would like to remove the consent agenda? If I hear none.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. A motion by Ross Connect and a second by Drews to approve the consent agenda as listed on there. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. We will move on to item number six, items from the public per S D C L one twenty-five one. If you had a speak, do we don't have any speaker request forms, so action will not be taken. Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven. Annexation request area near Old Folsom Road and Lamb Road, Black Hills Industrial Center LLC, Ms. Renee Katron, Office Manager at Advanced Design Engineering and Surveying. If you would come forward Renee, you know, we'll go forward if you just give us your name for the record and go ahead with your presentation, please.
Renee Katron with Advanced Design. This annexation is near Lamb Road and Old Folsom Road. It abuts the borders of Rapid City currently, which is currently annexed, so it'll go hand in hand with Black Hills Industrial Center being in Rapid City.
Okay, I see that. Does anybody have any questions?
Question.
Commissioner Drews has a question for you.
Renee, just a quick question. So there's no roads around this annexation property?
No, there is plans turned into the city for some roads internally.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross, Commissioner Ross Connect, please.
Thank you. So what's the intention of annexation? What, where's the benefit at? Just trying to figure that out. Not, not that I'm against it, I'm just trying to figure out what the motivation is.
Currently, Black Hills Industrial Center has a TIF with the city of Rapid City.
Okay.
So you're looking to probably be able to spend some money in that area.
Yeah. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hatcock, please.
Move to approve annexation request twenty-five eight N zero zero two.
Second.
We have a motion by Hatcock and a second by Drews to approve the annexation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. You are very persuasive, Mrs. Katron.
All that talk you did.
We'll move on to item number eight, items from the auditor, Ms. Cindy, transfer of package off-sale liquor license from Johnson Citing General Store under G S, J S, G S LLC to Country Store at Three Forks under Stelmac Oil LLC. I guess if anybody had any.
Good morning, Senator Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor.
Okay. Did you want to explain anything or just want to?
You just explained it, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I'll second.
Move to approve the transfer of the package off-sale liquor license from Johnson Citing General Store under J S G S LLC to Country Store at the Forks under Stelmac Oil LLC.
I have a motion from Commissioner Ross Connect and a second from Commissioner Hatcock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Item B, new license for retail on-off sale wine and cider license, the Prairie Dog Tap Room in Old Folsom Ranch Crossing. Do you entertain a motion?
Move to approve the new license for retail on-off sale wine and cider license for the Prairie Dog Tap Room in Folsom Ranch Crossing.
Second. We have a motion from Hatcock and a second from Dur. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cindy.
I like your shirt Cindy, that's cool.
Items from Building and Grounds Director, Mr. Davis. This is bid award for public safety building roof replacement, public safety building roof replacement.
You got it. Yep. Good morning, Commissioners Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds. So yes, this is a request to award bid for the public safety building roof replacement. That roof is roughly eighteen years old, nineteen years old. At the beginning, we were looking at doing a full tear-off, but in lieu of that, we're just going to replace the existing PVC membrane with an eighty mil PVC membrane, replace damage insulation and wood blocking as needed. And then we're going to install pressure equalizing vents in lieu of adding the vapor barrier, because the issue we have is some over-pressurization, which kind of balloons the roof at times. So, but in lieu of the full tear-off, we believe those pressure equalizing vents will solve that issue. We did go out to bid a few weeks back and the low bid was Black Hills Exteriors, so I'm asking for that approval today.
Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatcock.
I'd like to point out that they put two to three hundred thousand for this and it was a hundred and fifty-six for a hundred and fifty-five, so good job vetting the process and moving forward on it and lowering it down to a hundred and fifty-six, four fifty-five by doing your homework on it. So, thank you very much, Mr. Davis. We move to authorize award for public safety building roof replacement project to Black Hills Exteriors in amount of one fifty-six, four five-five funded through the Buildings and Grounds Capital Improvement Fund.
Second.
Of a motion by Hatcock and a second by Ross Connect for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Move on to item B, nine hundred concourse remodel, public entrance, hydronic snow melt system proposal. Mr. Davis, can you just tell us what this is?
You bet.
Hydronic snow melt.
So, yep, what we're looking at here is, it is a under, it is a underslab snow melt system, so there's hydronic, just meaning water piping that has glycol in it that goes underneath the concrete, that heats the concrete and therefore does not allow snow to build up or ice. And the reason we are looking at this is, I have this diagram here that shows the space that we're looking at for that hydronic snow melt system. These sides over here are the ADA parking, and I'll show some photos tied to those as well. But also, this north side of the building gets absolutely no sunlight in the winter time, absolutely zero. I should have taken pictures when there was a lot of compacted snow and other things out there this winter as the project was moving on, but, so, it is fairly expensive to do this, but at the end of the day, we do have aluminum storefront, excuse me, up here in the vestibule area that will get degraded by salt or mag water, and mag water also does degrade concrete over time, too. So by installing this system, we're not really having to put any salt or mag water in this area. I'll show some of these photos. So these stoops here will be tore out. They were poured as this sort of structural support here for this aluminum framing, but these will be tore out and replaced with the hydronic snow melt system. Just wanted to point that out. Here's that main entrance. It's kind of a, just a patio area out here. And then these are the sidewalks that were not called to be tore out yet, but we're going to tear them out, because as you can see, over time, for some reason, they continued to overlay asphalt on top of asphalt without actually tearing any asphalt out. So it's actually, they overlaid the asphalt so high in some areas that the ramps for the ADA parking are actually poured over like this, which actually isn't, needs to be addressed at some point anyways. But as we were looking at this, we, we figured if we're going to tear all this up, it would be best to put a hydronic snow melt system in there. So back to the memo real quick. I did have them break it up into two options. Partial install is obviously demo of any additional concrete and the stoops, and then it's installation of underground hydronic piping, new concrete installation, and then the system will be stubbed out into the building to hook up to later, which is eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and one dollars. Or the full installation, which includes all of the mechanical installation, boiler pumps, expansion tanks, controls, all of that, and that does come to two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. Dave, excuse me, Dave Eccleston, my assistant director, and I have talked about this in length, we do believe we could install that system later, or at least the interior system, the boilers, the pumps, the expansion tanks and controls. If we can just get the hydronic piping in place, I believe we could do it for a lot cheaper than that option two price, so that's why I'm recommending just to move forward with option one at this point.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hatcock.
So, and this is built in your budgets, because you have four million, nine oh seven left, three sixty-eight. So Davis, you have a lot of things you still need to get done. Is that going to put you behind or anything on the, using eighty-some thousand to do something that makes sense, I believe, but what does it do for your budget?
No, I think we're okay. I mean, we are pushing ten percent contingency now, spending on change orders for the full project amount. That's pretty much as high as I would like to go on a project like this, but it is a significant remodel, so that, that ten percent so far doesn't scare me. But I think, I'm hoping we'll be able to get through the project with, with what we have left to spend, and I'm hoping this is the last major item I'm taking to the commission for this project.
The main issue is not to deplete, that's what happened on this building, I'll keep saying, deplete because we ran out of money at the end, to be able to finish and do what we needed to do to this building, that we don't want to end up doing the same thing to that. That's why I'm asking you to make sure on the budget that we're keeping on, you know, the needs, not the wants on some areas, even though, again, Mr. Davis, I believe, you know, safety and why you're want to melt that, just for people's safety, but I also understand that you only have so much money to do what you need to do.
And I think this kind of hovers the, the line of a need and a want. It certainly is a want, but at the end of the day, this is our only entrance into that building, public entrance. It does face north, it gets zero sunlight. I have full faith in our Buildings and Grounds team to be able to clear the snow and, and do what they need to do in this area, but there's also very high winds out in this area, too, so this would prevent drifting, I mean, it would prevent all, any sort of snow removal that we would have to do from the ADA parking on both sides and that patio, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr., Commissioner Ross Connect, please.
So if we go with the less expensive option, can you just give, give me a, just an overview of how that system works? Are we still going to have to have a boiler and piping for that, too? And then, if we expand and we go to the, to the higher option, higher cost option, then we can always tie into that and expand it?
Yep, so option one, what it allows us to do is tie into it later, so it will stub all the piping out into the interior of the building, and we would just have to hook up to that piping and then install the boilers and the pumps and the expansion tanks. And I'm not saying this price is unreasonable, these hydronic snow melt systems are fairly costly, it's just on, you know, on certain projects, materials get marked up a little more, labor gets marked up a little more, so that's why you're seeing an inflated cost there. But I certainly think Buildings and Grounds can accomplish that for a much cheaper value. That's why I would highly recommend option one.
So what type of material is the piping?
It is PEX.
Is it a poly?
It's PEX, yeah, it's PEX. It's like, yeah, and it's, it'll have a glycol solution in it, so it will never freeze under the slab or anything like that, so.
Where's the boiler go then?
The boiler will be, we're looking at a, it's a, we have a custodial storage room. It's about two-thirds of the way back from the main entrance into the building, so piping will just be ran back there. That's why we need those pumps as well, because the water will be pumped a significant, you know, it'll be pumped about a hundred feet, so.
So is the boiler electric or gas?
It's gas, yep, yep, and all of the rooftop units on this building are gas, so we have a fairly easy way to get, to get gas to that unit, and we don't have to upsize any of the meters or anything like that to run it, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, Mr. Davis, just to clarify, by doing this option, you're going to save over fifty thousand dollars in the long run?
Well, yes, yes.
Because you're gonna, if you did it right now as one unit, it'll be two hundred and twenty bucks, two hundred and twenty thousand. If you do it, it's going to be about roughly a hundred and sixty-nine.
Well, we priced out the, we priced out the materials ourselves for everything that we would need to get it up and functional, and it's about twenty thousand dollars just for the material. And then it's, it's our labor, right? But our labor is budgeted for, so we would just make it a, a project that, that we would get done.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Any questions on this side? Commissioner, no?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think where this would really make sense is when it's about ten degrees, the wind's blowing sixty miles an hour and that snow's building up there and you're not going to have to have somebody from maintenance out there shoveling and putting ice or salt down. I think this is the cure-all for that, if something like that happens.
We'll entertain a motion here, Joan.
I'll go ahead and move to approve option one for the hydronic snow melt system at nine hundred concourse front entrance in the amount of eighty-six thousand, one sixty to be installed by CECO with future system completion to be performed by Building, Buildings and Grounds.
Second. We got a motion by Ross Connect and a second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none. Some of you guys helped Mr. Ross Connect out on these motions, because he's having a hard time talking today, so. We'll move on to item number ten, items from Human Services, Buildings and Grounds Director Davis Purcell. And Human Services Director Barry Tice.
Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chairman. I've got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's all right. Getting back to the public safety building, was that the one that the insurance claim was on and you were arguing, or not arguing, but discussing with our provider?
No, that was the jail annex roof.
All right.
The public safety building did not have an extensive amount of hail damage to submit a claim, but the jail annex, yes, we are still working through that claim on the jail annex roof.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Question number two.
Go ahead, you bet, go ahead.
Okay. I mentioned it to you in the hallway, but I just wanted to talk about it in front of the commission. I noticed in our bills this month and the invoices, which are about five million, I think, that we just, the chairman's going to sign his name to. So the twenty-four, seven operations, I see that we're leasing that and then paying, it looks anyway like Black Hills Works to do janitorial over there. And so I would like Davis to work with the sheriff to see if there is an alternative location to move twenty-four, seven, so we're not paying lease agreement on that building, and look at our existing footprint and see if there's an option. And these are things that I'm looking at as we're preparing for the twenty-sixth budget, because when we get into the twenty-sixth budget, we need to look at making some substantial cuts, and we need to just look internally and see if we can better utilize the space we have instead of leasing property with all the footprint that the county has, so.
Yep, I'll look into it.
Commissioner Dur, that's good information. We'll move on to item number ten, items from Human Services, Building and Grounds Director, Mr. Davis, and Human Services Director, Mr. Barry Tice. Genoa Pharmacy Agreement. No, this will be interesting, okay?
No, so I actually, I saw that Human Services had, are looking at an agreement here with the pharmacy, and I, I wanted to add a memo in here just to give the commission an update on the pharmacy. For a few of you that were not on the commission, last year, we had approved a pharmacy to go into the Pivot Point Building, which is right next to the care campus or right behind it, if you will. And so that project is almost complete. As you can see in the memo, there's a few card readers that have to be added and some door hardware has to be changed for it to, for it to get to a substantial completion walkthrough, but it is operational and we have started receiving monthly lease payments in March. March first was the first lease payment as they were starting to operate out of that building, so.
Chair.
Just an update I wanted to give.
So just an explanation, Brenda, of who uses this and why they use it, that kind of thing, if we could, so.
Yes, that's our memo, Brenda Dalkey, Assistant Director, Human Services. Barry is not available today. So the pharmacy, we utilize, we may give a client a voucher for medication payment. The pharmacy is open to the public, so anyone can use it. We don't do this very often anymore with community or the complete health having their own pharmacy now, more of an emergent basis, that we help somebody with medications, we get some requests for co-pays, we're able to handle some of those with grant funds. So it's not real often, it just would give us the ability to work with them.
Is that it, Commissioner Hatcock? Anybody else have a question? Is there a pharmacy located in this building now?
BMS.
And there's a pharmacist in there?
Yeah. Yeah, we, I don't.
Do they have restricted, are they there all the time, or?
Yes, yeah, they're there during the week, yep. I'm not so sure about weekends, but yes, it is, it's not a, open to the public pharmacy, though, correct? Or is it, is it just utilized by?
We were told we could, like, staff could use it. We were told public could use it, but.
Is it affiliated with one of the pharmacies?
It's Genoa Pharmacy.
Maybe to get some more information sent, so we have more information how it's being used.
It's Genoa Healthcare, I think is the company.
Well, just, let's locate BMS, what the hours are, who can use it, just to have that clarified.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner?
Does this, yeah, I'm reading the information here, but does this have something to do with the West River, formerly BMS Mental Health?
Yes, it's in that Pivot Point Building, so their clients will be able to have access as well.
All right. Good, because I had a meeting with them, coffee and a meet and greet here like a week ago, and they had talked about this coming in, and so for their clientele, instead of trying to go out to pharmacies outside, et cetera, and doing these, you know, medications and stuff to have that client management in-house is a benefit. And then the only question I would have, kind of related to this, and it's a Davis question, would be, when the county has space available that we're offering outside of county use, what does that process look like when we're saying, you as an outside entity can come in and utilize county property and we'll establish a lease agreement? So what is, do you know what that process is?
Not entirely, no. I believe we were, or the sheriff's office was contacted, I believe, by Genoa Farm, or Genoa Healthcare to potentially put a pharmacy in that building, but I'm not, I'm not sure of that whole process. That was truly the first lease that I was a part of my time here, so.
Okay. Yeah, I would, and the question, other question I would have, and when these lease agreements for space and such come forward, do we present these to the state attorney's office for review?
Yes.
Okay.
And we presented the, the pharmacy agreement, the states, to the state's attorney's office as well, and they went through that for us.
All right.
We'll entertain a motion here, other than Mr. Ross Connect.
Let me find it here, I'll take it on. It's an easy one, motion to approve the agreement with Genoa Healthcare LLC.
Motion by Dur, second by?
Second.
Hatcock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, this is item number eleven, consideration of the vouchers, and there'll be two motions here, because the first one, Commissioner Hatcock would have to abstain from, so, does anybody have any questions on these? I know Commissioner Dur brought up a couple items on there, is there, anybody else has anything else that they want to add to these? Commissioner Dur?
I'm just going to comment, I was going to save it for, you know, when I was talking later on the agenda, as we do as commissioners, but I'll bring it up now as soon as we're talking about these vouchers, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, in the vouchers, if you go through, and I'm sure that you do, but there's a lot of out, I mean, it's a list of vouchers every two weeks, this one, you can see, we have five million, and there's project payments on substantial completion on like the concourse project, but some of the vouchers that stuck out to me, a couple that I looked at, was the twenty-four, seven operations and outside lease agreements that we have that I just spoke about. The other one in here is, you'll see an invoice in there, and the comment line is Project Ten ninety-five, and so I came in, I thought I kind of knew what that was about, but if you just look at the invoice and it says twelve thousand and change to Cadel Thorstensen, and it just says Project Ten ninety-five, looking that up, and I had Joan pull it for me, because I thought it was what it is, and it's basically paying Cadel Thorstensen to process our required notifications to the employees and their healthcare elections, and it's called that Ten ninety-five form. And so if you go through the invoices, and I've noticed this is kind of a pattern, that we're spending tens of thousands of dollars as a county outsourcing services that I think could be done internally. And so we have a new, this is one example, so the Ten ninety-five, and I did visit with the H R office, because they're the ones signing off on the invoice, but the software that we're going to be going to, which is ENCODE ten, has the ability to process these easier than our current Springbrook software does. So one of the benefits of going to ENCODE is also, this is just one example, that I asked the H R office to not budget for this thirteen thousand dollar process for two thousand and twenty-six, because you can run this internally and through the software that we're going to be going to, so. And I look at, there's invoices in here, I've seen them for Midwest Marketing, Home Slice, we're paying for recruitment efforts outside of the county, and paying thousands of dollars to have assistance on marketing for employees and those types of things. I would just ask department heads to look at those invoices and look at that process, and I believe that we have a skill set and a staff in-house that we should be able to manage some of these things internally, because those are the things that, starting next month, when we're talking budget process, that I will be highlighting and talking about as we go through it and saying, you know, we need to really limit the services that we're contracting, paying for outside of the county, when we have staff in-house and the software and equipment, I believe that we can do it internally. So, the other one was a payment to fifty-five thousand to Central State's Fair. I talked to Cindy this morning about that one, and so there's been historical practice, the fair levy brings in about five hundred and fifty thousand, and so I saw the invoice came through the office that Joan was processing, and so the current way the Central State's Fair is getting that allotment in the budget back to them is by submitting invoices one at a time to the county, and that's kind of to say that, yes, these expenses are going toward maintenance projects and those types of things. It just looked cumbersome to me that we have a levy, and just like we portion out to other taxing entities, why not just say, okay, your budget is five hundred thousand, we could split that payment in twice a year, a quarter million, a quarter million, they're spending, you know, that money on the fair project, but it's just another process where I have to invoice that, let me invoice you, let me process that invoice, let's run it through for the commissioners, let's spend the money to cut a check and pay that, and it's just another way of looking at how to do business and saying, why are we doing it this way? So in a conversation with the auditor this morning, she agreed, and I did have a fair board meeting last night, I'm going to have it on the agenda for May sixth, and I would like to look at some of these processes that we're doing, and then we just cut the fair check instead of billing each other back and forth and doing that process. They have a budget, we have a fund, let's just pay the money off. So those were my comments on the invoices.
Mr. Chair.
Mr., Commissioner Ross, connect, please.
Hey, Jerry, on that Cadel Thorstensen, is that like a one-time annual?
It's in, yeah, it's an annual payment to process eight hundred and ninety-five of those. It's in, yeah, it's an annual payment to process 895 of those uh mandatory forms. And so I've done that before. I mean, I've, I ran that internally when that was one of the responsibilities I had in a previous job, but you know, we just did all of that stuff in-house. It's no different than processing a W2 and doing the mailings in a 1099. So we have the equipment, we have the software. I do know that Springbrook is not a uh real robust financial module that we have, but this is a benefit to transitioning to ENCODE 10. Is it a lot of things that we can't do to include, a lot of things in our budgeting process can be done within ENCODE 10, and everybody's gonna find that it's going to be uh much more user-friendly and able to generate and do the business that the county needs to do, and really in a more efficient manner, so.
Yeah, I like the idea of starting off with the Cadel Thorstensen, and then seeing how that works, and then go to the next one, and just start chiseling away one at a time.
Right. And I mean, when you look at some of these, and you're going 10 grand here, 12,000 here, 20,000 here, 15,000 there, every two weeks, uh in a year, that's called substantial budget savings.
I appreciate the effort, that sometimes it seems to be a Herculean effort when you're a part-time person, but I think some of the changes we've made are gonna be substantial in the end, and uh there'll be a little bit of uh changing of the way we do things, but I think in the long run, it'll be great, and uh it'll actually um empower the people in our, in our employment here too, uh looking at, you know, the marketing stuff and, and these types of things. They add up. Uh so I appreciate that. I know it's, it's not easy to sit there and read all that stuff one day.
It was a lot, but it's your name on it.
Okay, um so should we, we got two motions here, uh guys, um so.
So I'll make a motion to approve a voucher for Rose in LLC in the amount of $360.
And this is with, uh Hatcock will abstain from this.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion from uh Dur, and a second from Roskin. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries with Hatcock abstaining. We'll move on to motion two, please.
Move to approve the remaining vouchers in the amount of 5,000,31,382 and 30 cents.
Second.
We have a motion from Dur and a second by Drews. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Um item number 12, Items from Planning and Zoning, Director, Ms. Brittany. Moratorium of Data Centers, Ordinance Number 797, continuing from 4125. We'll give you an opportunity to explain what you're doing with this, so the audience understands that we're not trying to stop data centers. We understand they're gonna happen. We're looking for a pause so we can get good control in place. If we don't have this control in place, it could cause utter confusion and chaos going forward. So Ms. Brittany, you have the floor.
Good morning Commissioners, Brittany Moller, Planning Director. Uh staff is just requesting this temporary pause uh to allow for some thoughtful planning. We do have an ordinance that we're trying to work through. Um we have received some comments on it, but it does take time to advertise um and do that public notification process for it. Right now, we don't have any ordinance in place. Um it would be a conditional use at this time, uh with some additional variances. Uh and just so the board is aware, if it is a conditional use at this time, the board would not see these requests. Uh they would only go through the Planning Commission. Uh so that's a concern, um too, from staff because of the size of these type of centers and the um utilities that are um needed to facilitate these, um that it would be in the best interest of uh the community for the board to actually see these types of requests. So we're just act, asking for this uh temporary zoning control for no more than six months in order to get this ordinance um advertised and through the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners for approval.
Can we have? Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Drews. So Brittany, where are you at in the process at this point in time?
Um at this point, um we have sent out um to some of the providers and gotten their comments back. Um we wanna look at those comments, uh get it to our state's attorney's office, and then do the advertising. Uh so it would go in front of the Planning Commission and then the Board of Commissioners.
So have you solicited any other ordinances from other counties that have put something in place or not?
Yes, we've looked at some other counties. Um a lot of them are in cities, which, cities are a little different from a municipal point of view, because they are utility providers, where the county is not a utility provider, so we don't have any oversight over that and would rely on outside utility providers for comments and requirements.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
So Brittany, I'm looking at Ordinance 797, and the wording says hereby authorize a six-month moratorium then, but uh could we change that wording that it would be no longer than six months? Because what happened if next month we get it fixed?
Well, it will take a little longer than a month because of the advertising and going in front of the Planning Commission. Um but if we get something in place, you guys can rescind the moratorium the day that you approve the ordinance. So I mean, there's no.
Yeah, I just wondered, you know, six month, it sounds like nothing's gonna happen until six months. If we reworded it where it, it will be no longer than six months, at least then we know that in four months, if we have something in place, we're ready to go. That was just, you, you mentioned up there that wording, and I thought we could apply it in this uh ordinance.
Well, and I do have the expiration is October 7th. I mean, you could change that, but you could put no more than six months, if that's what you choose.
I think that would be more user-friendly.
Is, is that what you're saying? I think that you're saying the same thing, aren't you guys?
Yes.
Yeah, no, no more than six months.
Right, and I like that language in there, because then it would indicate that, like, just like was discussed, that we could take action sooner than that. We don't have to wait till the sixth month.
Right. And I, I think that chances are that this'll probably go into Dream Designs' area anyway, which is getting annexed into the city, so I think, I think if the data centers are looking at, but I heard on the news today that uh the Board of Education passed a mandatory curriculum for education to be, include AI. So we all know it's coming, we all know it's a big deal, and we're gonna, we just wanna be covered and have something in place that covers us, so we can uh move forward. So any more questions from anybody?
Here.
Yes.
Just a comment. I think for anything we do in the county, infrastructure is our biggest, either a positive or a negative, and to be able to facilitate these and be able to move forward with them, I think they're the future um AI is. So anything we can do to facilitate that, facilitate that way and use, use that infrastructure that we have, hopefully to be able to get this done would be a positive. But I see a lot of the water usage and some of the stuff for contaminants and some of the other areas that, um let's look at it, make sure we're um taking care of our citizens as well as taking care of the companies that wanna come and facilitate this for us. So um I think I'm on both sides. I'd just like to see a good ordinance, and I have full faith our uh Planning Department will get that done just from seeing other areas. So if, I believe if they get it done early, um which Jason and Brittany do a lot of research, that they'll pull it forward a lot quicker than six months.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I don't know if you have any speaker request forms there, but.
I don't, I don't see them.
I, I know that you have several in the audience that are interested in this.
Oh, then I'd say we should entertain the fact, if anybody wants to come forward and visit about it, then we'd, we'd offer that. Um I just wanted to say one more thing to Brittany. I said, if you could share some of this information that you're gathering, like, because we're, a lot of the concerns are coming in about water usage and stuff like that. I've been doing some research, and all the data that I could find is outdated. Um it's back to 2020. I know they've made big advances since 2020 and, and, you know, water usage. I know you're dealing with another county with uh, or city with Sioux Falls and some of those cities. If you could just share with that, and I'll try not to just, you know, get in the middle of it, but I just want it for my own information, if you could, and maybe with the rest of the commission, share that, so.
And honestly, if I could segue to my Assistant Director, Jason, because he was just at the APA conference and had talked to the gentleman uh from the city of Cheyenne, and so he has some information.
Cheyenne has a data center too? Oh, cool, awesome, okay. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to make any comments? Um you're more than welcome to come on up and, after Jason's done here, and make a comment. So Jason, go ahead.
Uh Jason Thunessin, Assistant Planning Director. Yep, so when I was down at uh, in Denver for that planning conference, I did make contact with some of the city planners from the city of Cheyenne. Uh they are on the cutting edge of uh data centers down there. Uh they're along a major uh internet interconnect um down there, so that makes that a very popular area. But as far as water usage goes and electricity, I have not had a chance to contact them and talk to them through the specifics of it. Um but do you have any other questions specifically for data centers that you want me to key in on?
Uh my, my just, my concern is I wanna make sure that we're not shutting anybody out of, I mean, I know we gotta have one or its place. If there's a place that they wanna go in the county that we affect, that plating or that process or whatever, the ordinances or whatever, that we're still open to communication. We're not, we're not, I don't want anybody to get a misconception that we're trying to shut this down. It's not even the farthest thing from our minds, so um that being said, I mean, you know, obviously we wanna get some good ordinance in place as fast as we can. Like, we annex a part of the Dream Dev, development out on 79. I think that's probably, they have the infrastructure out there to best serve data centers, so I'm assuming that's where people are probably gonna be looking coming in the future. But I know there's been talk about people wanting to re, to locate in Rapid City because of our cool environment is one good reason that they wanna be here. You know, with the wind blowing and, and it being a little bit cooler, it helps with their, their efficiencies, so.
Rusty, you have anything to share, since you're the infrastructure for water out east? By chance, thank you, sir.
Talking about it, but. Morning Commissioners, Rusty Schmidt with Rapid Valley Sanitary District. Um yeah, I was visiting with some of the electrical providers here about this possibility of uh data centers, and I think it's a viable option. You know, just parameters that would be put in place, because the water demand is astronomical with them, right? And utilizing the, you know, the numbers of that 1.8 liters per 1,000 kilowatts, you know, that basically converts to a half a gallon per hour. That's not a big thing there, but when you're talking to 50 megawatt uh data center, you know, that even at that, you're talking probably right at 400 gallons a minute, 24/7, you know, which can be done, but then that's water that can go to other developments and commercial businesses and residential as well. So I think with the technology that, you know, we employ in our water system, where we're at a 99% recovery, if these data centers wanna come forward and provide uh technology that they could do a recovery rate of 90, 95%, and then provide uh whatever um public utility is providing the water, um with what that'll actually peak day demand will be, average day demand, and with that recovery rate, I mean, uh then it's, it is doable. And uh something to move forward with it, because it's not just, on the water side of things, it's not just that, the demand, the type of water quality they require, uh nobody has that type of treatment here. It's, that's basically a reverse osmosis or a deionization, which can be done as well. Um but uh so they would have quite an investment in getting the type of water that they would want, because you gotta have a, you know, a total dissolved solids of 10 parts per million or less. Average water systems are anywhere from 200 to 400 parts per million, right? So they, not only with that, where they have investments in, and it would have to go through the, you know, local authority of the water utility and sewer utility, um you know, to provide the correct treatment to, to build the direct right, uh technology and storage capacity and all that would be needed, and with the recovery rate, and it could be, it could be done, so.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
So you said 50 megawatt, 400 gallons a minute? So is there a table, Rusty? So then, let's just say somebody said, we wanna go 25 megawatt, then would that be like 200 gallons a minute then?
Correct, yeah, that'd be, you know, right at that 200 gallons a minute, to continuous. But even then, I mean, that's, that's doable, but it does, it takes away from a large uh uh faction of the rest of the development that's going on, so. They're, like I said, they, this, you know, they're in servers and AI, surely they got technology like, uh I've heard, I mean, I ain't a data center expert, but like closed-loop systems where they can reuse the same water multiple times, so if they can achieve a, a high rate of recovery and daily reuse, it's, it wouldn't be an issue at all, so.
That's the way I understand it, trying to find the, the difference between 2020 and what it is today on the recovery that they're using. And they also have different sizes of, like you mentioned, data centers.
Yeah, you know, I just use like a 50 megawatt as a, as a limit for us, say if that was a capacity what the local electric utility could handle, but you know, of course there's, you know, Google and all them other ones are considerably larger than that, but uh you know, so. But the key is the recovery and the reuse, and when, then they would have to provide an ultimate build out to all of us and, uh you know, project planning, so to see what that would, you know, entail, let alone the sound mitigation and other things that come with that stuff, but it can be done, I was just saying. I wouldn't uh put a stop to it, as long as they can meet the parameters and the local systems can uh agree.
There's really not much they put into that water to help cool if they can't reclaim, that they can't get a 90-some percent reclamation on that water.
Yeah, I mean, uh like I said, we have the technology in our operation, and I've had right about a 99% recovery of the water we pull from Rapid Creek, right? So they should, uh you know, reverse osmosis, that type of treatment that would probably be required for these systems, they have a fairly high um waste, right? You know, 15 to 20% uh just on that alone, but to say at that 400 gallons a minute on a 50 megawatt, you know, that's half a million gallons a day. If you provide them the initial half a million, they have storage and can reuse that. If they can achieve a 95% recovery, that would be what? 28,000 gallons a day, you would have to recharge them, that's minimal, that's nothing. Um and then, of course, factor in your RO waste too.
I think that's where the biggest threat factor comes in, people don't quite understand the reclamation recovery. I appreciate you explaining that part to us, because I've been reading there's some places that'll use even seawater. They can use dirtier water, but they don't have as good an ability to, to reclaim it. It doesn't cool as fast or as long. They use sewer retreated water, um so they, they're, they're really coming along with, so.
And there's other factors to consider, just on the reclaimed water. If you was to utilize a wastewater and reclaim that, you know, there's other factors to consider, because uh you know, the, the water rights that we have, Rapid City has at a surface, if that don't go back into the creek, that could allocate a difference on how much water rights we get to keep and reuse, you know, because with the waste that goes back into the creek, the state counts that coming back to us, right, so.
As long as it's clean enough, they could drop it back in the creek.
They can drop it back in, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm reading, so it, hopefully that helps. There are some minds, and obviously we'll get there, and if, if we have a data center that's out there wanting to come in, we're not here to stop you. Um obviously, we've got you on board. I think the city would be on board. They've got.
Yeah.
You know, so appreciate it, Rusty.
You bet.
How's your well coming over there on?
It's uh completed, as for drilling. Um we actually did the step test and uh um for volumes, we ran it at 600 gallons a minute for two hours, 700, 800, 900, and 1,000 gallons a minute we ran for 24 hours straight. So I believe we're gonna have a 1,000 gallon per minute well, so that's uh probably um more, a little more in double than what was expected, so.
We appreciate all your efforts.
Best investment the Pennington County did that year is, is to put some money into some of your water systems and your sewer systems and some of the things that you needed. Um very efficient, very effective we've always been, Rusty.
Yeah, thank you.
Come on forward there, Mr. Garv.
Good morning Commissioners, Garth Wadsworth with Elevator Rapid City. One quick point I would like the commission to consider, uh these projects, especially the large ones, play out over a long, long timeframe. And so, yes, this is a short-term zoning pause, uh but in the next six months, that could potentially impact projects that we wouldn't see applications or permits for in the next 18 to even 24 months. Uh there are so many hoops that these projects need to jump through, uh in order for them to get to a point where we have to consider an application from them, we could potentially shoot ourselves in the foot by adopting even a short-term six-month pause. So uh the site selectors for these data center projects have a long list of communities, right? They do this so that they can play these communities off of each other. They're looking for any reason to start to whittle down that list and remove communities from that list. And so that could be something like a short-term pause, uh but their goal is to get that down to a list of three to five in the next six months, whatever it may be, so that they can then start to do specifics, put options agreements in place, start to negotiate with landowners across those five communities, so that they can find the best deal, right? What that means is, in the next six months, right, projects that won't move dirt for another two years could potentially, we, we could lose those, right? And so we could be losing out on a number of opportunities. And so I just, I just wanna make sure that we keep that in mind. I should also say that uh I wanna thank Brittany and Jason, they've been incredibly good to work with. I do think they've made a lot of progress in just the last two weeks, uh and if we keep this up, I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't have something finalized in the very near future. Uh and so, yes, there is obviously uh the, the Planning Commission um process and, and advertising to make sure that we, we jump through the hoops. Um but even with that timeline, I feel comfortable that we can have something that addresses Planning Department's needs, Rusty's needs, uh and the surrounding communities' needs, uh before we really see any kind of pressure from, from one of these develop, developers.
The Chair. So, we're not really stifling anything by the county because the city will do it through their, uh, process. They just have use by right, which in that case, then they come in and probably will do somewhat. I don't know if they have ordinance at this time. If I'm correct, Brittany, do they have an ordinance?
Yes.
So, it's used by right. So, bottom line is, um, if I was coming and I was a businessperson and I knew I had the water resources through Rapid City, and that also, Rapid City needs to think about the Ellsworth Air Force Base and how those rights are affected. Um, and bottom line is, again, um, what does it entail? What is, what is, like Rusty said, can it be done? It can be done. If I'm going to do it simplified, I would go through the business person of Rapid City than I would do, um, no offense, Rusty, um, through a water source that I don't know. Um, in one sense, we're drilling wells, we're doing stuff for the infrastructure so we can build out east. Um, where do we want to go? Do we want to build? Or do you want to do AI? Or how do we do both? So, I would pick Black Hills, the annexation area where Hanny's going. First, it wouldn't stifle anybody and is, do you plan on putting two to four in, in the next couple of years, in the next six months? Um, I don't think it's stifling when, when you're doing good planning in one sense and the other, that you still have opportunity in, in the same area, which is, what is in, we have a mile, three-mile district right in that area anyway. So, I think it, it, it's a good planning for the county to do it. City's ready to go. Supposedly they have the water right. So, um, again, if I was a businessperson, I would pick Rapid City, and then I would be looking at Rusty if I was thinking out the second part, um, just to make sure. Um, and again, good planning would be from Rusty and the city and county and box, Eldon and surrounding area. Where those, where does that water really need to be and where do we want it to go in the future?
Okay, I, I.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
You know, we were in peer a couple of days last week, talked to a lot of county commissioners, talked about data centers. And I mentioned the word moratorium. This is, you can, you don't need to use moratorium in, in your wording. You can, there's a lot of other wording that'll do the same thing because moratorium scares people. It just does. And I don't have the exact phrases that they're saying, but there's all types of other wording. You'll get the same thing done and you don't have to use the word moratorium. Uh, to me, that's, that's just my opinion based on, uh, you know, trying to promote a business opportunity to Rapid City because they're going to come sooner or later. And I think we need to put our hand out and let them know that they're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. If I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's a wide variety in water demands for these projects. So, we're seeing newer projects come online in North Dakota where they use sixty to seventy thousand gallons a year. I mean, these are, are hundreds of megawatt projects. They're massive. Uh, that's less than the average single-family household. The challenge is I cannot guarantee that a project that comes forward is going to have that kind of technology in place. We do want to make sure that we leave the door open for those projects in the next six months so that they do have the flexibility to site anywhere, right? And so, they have to consider the combination of the total cost of infrastructure improvements, water infrastructure, road and transportation, and electrical. And so they need to have the flexibility. And if they don't need that much water, and if they can utilize existing water resources, uh, where it's not going to have a strain beyond the size of an average single-family home, they should be able to do that if it allows them to reduce the cost of the investments of the electrical infrastructure.
And Garth, if you don't mind me saying, I think what you're saying is the same thing we're saying, is that you are confident with Jason and Brittany. And Brittany has, has , um, obviously been approaching the verbiage with a temporary pause so she can get time to, you are confident, what I'm getting from you is you're confident in where we're heading right now that within short order, we will have something in place. Does the city of Rapid City have something in place?
So, yes and yes. The city does have an ordinance in place.
They already have something in place. Okay. So, I, I, I would say that I think the Commission feels the same way, that this would be a priority for, for our people. You are confident is what you're saying, is what I'm gathering, that what we're doing today is going to work for you and work for the people that we are willing to move forward, and we're going to get this done in short order. Nothing stops us from bringing forward an ordinance tomorrow, if that would be the case, right? Is that, is that, is that good? Is that fair to say?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I think we're all on the same page. But Commissioner Dur.
Yeah, Brittany. So, could you explain what the current process is if today, uh, somebody filed an application for a data center? What is that process?
So, they would file a conditional use application, uh, for the use. Um, right now, there's no restriction on where that use would be. Um, so they could file it in, uh, agricultural, commercial, industrial. Um, we would probably look at it from a perspective that it'd have to be in an industrial or somewhere where the sighting would be. Um, they would go through the conditional use process, meaning they would only go in front of the Planning Commission. The Board of Commissioners would not see this application. In addition, um, all of our zoning districts have a height restriction of thirty-five feet. Uh, most of the data centers are over that, so they would have to come in front of the Board of Adjustment, uh, for variances for that. And then depending upon the site, um, they would have to do stormwater controls and things like that. That, that's just, without even knowing what the application is going to be, that's just a generalization, so.
Mr. Chair.
But the Board of Commissioners would not see the application. The only application the Board would see is under the Board of Adjustment for the height variance.
Mr. Dur, that answer your question?
Oh, Mr. Roskin.
Okay, sure.
Uh, no, uh, you know, we're all thinking they're just going to go right there then by that twenty-acre site where the, the two grids come together. But, I, I bought, you know, I've also heard that there's, uh, you know, they could actually go buy eighty acres and go out in the middle of nowhere, and they would pay for all the infrastructure uh, ne- needed for the water and the electricity. So, I, I think we're all, our heads all around that they got to go into this industrial spot, but no more different than the solar and the wind. They might want to go someplace much isolated, so there's a lot of variables here.
That is possible, but also with the solar and wind, that's why we have a committee right now because that is something that is somewhat contentious at this point.
Commissioner Drews has a.
I, I think that, you know, we've been talking about data centers and thinking, you know, substantial size. There are a lot of data centers that are, uh, minimum in size also that, uh, s- other specific type projects. And so, I don't think we need to just concentrate on something huge. Uh, obviously, we need to, uh, have an ordinance that deals with all of them, but, uh, so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Russ.
So, one example of one of the Commissioners, they got a data center in their county and the, and the physical building's twelve feet long by three hundred and forty, and there's four of them. And that's their data center. So, there's an example of a smaller one. You know, they come in all different sizes. And to me, what determines the size is, you determine if you have the water and electricity to accommodate that size. It just makes sense. If it's, if you only got so much water, you only got so much electricity, you don't build a data center that would take more than, uh, what the resources would provide.
I'm confident that Brittany can handle it. If, if direction comes from this Commission that it's a priority. I mean, I think you feel that way anyway, so.
We have to have a motion?
Miss, I've got, Mr., I've got one more. So, if you were, you're working at it now, I'm assuming you're looking at what the city of Rapid City has?
The city of Rapid City, it's a use by right in an industrial district. And then they have some caveats for, uh, utilities, but they're a utility provider, so they have some oversight on that.
Okay. So, what would you anticipate your timeline being by coming forward with an ordinance for us to look at?
Um, we have most of the comments already, so it's just going through them and having our state's attorney's office, uh, review it. Um, the other, um, issue with it right now, we just have it going to Planning Commission. Um, and my understanding is that it would want to be in front of the Board of Commissioners, so adding that in, which that isn't a huge, um, task because it's something that's already in, uh, another section of our ordinance under mining. So, we would just take that similar process.
All right.
Is everybody comfortable with that? I'm comfortable with her.
So, we could probably have it advertised within a couple of weeks to go on a Planning Commission agenda, possibly, uh, end of May.
All right.
Jerry's comfortable with that?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I think, um, do we have a motion on the table, Karen?
No.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm, under the circumstances, I'm just not sure that we need to have this, uh, temporary ordinance even.
Temporary ordinance.
I think, I think everything is moving forward to the point that, uh, temporary ordinance is maybe not necessary at all.
If temporary pause maybe not even necessary?
Right.
Okay.
That's kind of my gut on this because when we have a timeline coming up and we're saying, you know, within thirty days, you know, the thirty to forty-five days, we can have something in place that, uh, would, you know, regulate this. And what we talked about in our task force meeting yesterday on the Alternative Energy Task Force, uh, we got through a lot yesterday and then talked about just what Brittany mentioned, that part of the discussion in there, but related to solar and wind is that we would kind of mirror what we're doing with mining and taking away the ability of the Planning Board to be the sole decider on conditional use permit, and that it would come to the Board of County Commissioners. And so, we really have had some great conversations in there, and Brittany's got a long list to get through for our next meeting. And actually, I received a phone call from a surrounding county last night and another organization about our task force meeting. And a couple of them are going to come, uh, to the next, uh, meeting we have. But I'm ki- I'm not into over-regulating on some of this stuff. And I just think that, uh, you know, uh, to, and then again, think about it every time you do one of these, then you have to do the publication cost, you do those things. And I think we're close enough now that we're within, you know, thirty to forty-five days of having something that's going to be in front of us. I don't see the need to forecast a moratorium.
So, Chair, can I ask Brittany and Jason to come up and ask, um, why they're asking the Board to have a temporary pause? Some of it to do the ordinance, but now that Brittany's saying she might have it ready in a month or something, maybe there's a different change of heart, or, or tell us why that we need this motion or don't need this motion at this time.
Basically, the question she's asking, would you be okay if we just didn't? I mean, I am confident that without it, you guys can handle it or whatever. So, that'd be my position.
The only concern would be this wouldn't prevent anyone from applying right now. Our conditional use permit process, um, I know that they say it's a long timeline. Um, but if you look at, uh, for example, Yaro Tech, they have two years to establish the use under an old ordinance. So, it doesn't prevent them even in their planning stage, like for them, they wanted to have the conditional use permit process, which is basically their property right before they had all of the other stuff vetted out. And that's one of the concerns that we have. And that's why I feel like, you know, coming forward with this because we've learned from that particular process that it was not effective because we had a lot of unanswered questions. And now we have a moratorium after the fact with that. Uh, so, and the other thing is, is, you know, we can bring it in front of our Planning Commission, but I don't know how long our Planning Commission will have it. Uh, when we had our mining ordinance, they had four meetings and public meetings before they even moved it on to the Board. So, we could have it to them, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they'll move it forward quickly. So, that's a couple of our concerns.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
So, Brittany, you mentioned comments. So, who will, who is, uh, who are providing the comments? And that's the part I'm confused. This hasn't really been advertised or anything, has it?
No, I was speaking on the Yaro Tech, the situation where that, all of the things weren't in place at the time, and then there was a lot of comment on it because those things weren't cited. But nothing prevented them from getting their conditional use permit first. There's nothing in our ordinance, there's nothing that prevented them from doing that process first.
Right. And then, if I may, um, I see this more as a protection for the developers that come in here as well. Because like, we don't have an ordinance on the books, we don't have standards to hold them to, we don't have any way to draft conditions for them. So, we may err and be overly restrictive on a developer that wants to come in and have a data center. Or conversely, we may be, uh, too lax on some of the conditions of approval that we include on that, uh, conditional use permit. And we just want to make sure we get it right, and we're protecting the community and protecting the developer at the same time. Um, giving us a little bit of extra time to reach out to these communities who experience these data centers like Cheyenne, Wyoming, um, that are on the forefront of these things, um, getting some lessons learned from them, coordinating with them, um, I think is going to allow us to have a better sol- a more solid ordinance on the books instead of trying to rush through it.
Commissioner Hatcock.
So, being the Chair of Committees, um, that we have done mining, we have done a couple other different ordinance, ordinances, they're, these guys are right. And, uh, I'll just tell you, um, I've worked with both of them long enough to trust that what they're trying to tell us is give them some time, not shut down data centers, but AI centers, but give them some time. And they're asking us to do a temporary zoning ordinance just to make sure it's regulated and regulated right. Um, it's not going to, I, I believe it's not going to hurt the data centers, and they're going to come or they're not going to come, uh, because they're going to see the water sources, they're going to see the region, just kind of like the wind and solar. Um, they pick it for a reason. Um, they're not going to pick it now and go, oh, jeez, these guys, they don't really want us. I guess I'm not seeing that. I'm seeing that they're, they're wanting to see, even before we do it, a zoning ordinance. Um, and I don't think they're going to come until they see it anyway. I wouldn't if you're a businessperson. So, why not let them work on it? Show them the zoning ordinance. If they have questions on it, they can always call and say, you know, what are you guys looking at? Um, any good businessperson that's going to come in and spend that kind of money, they're going to research what's happening, or they're going to call the people that are working on it and say, what are you guys thinking? They're also going to call the electricity companies, they're also going to call the PUC. It's not going to be overnight for them either. It's going to take a while for them to figure out. I don't see, I, I can't see the restriction, being a businessperson, of something that I know in that area that I've already, um, looked at all the data, I'll look at all the areas they put it at, and then found out, okay, that's why we didn't do it. It wasn't because, okay, they just have a temporary zoning ordinance. They might restrict us so bad that we don't even want to be there. Um, I've never heard that except for when they literally show, um, when they're doing anything in their area, seeing it in solar or wind, they just don't want solar and wind in their areas. I get it. But that's not the message that this is sending, I believe.
Is there any more discussion?
Yeah. So, the ordinance, as you work on the ordinance for a data center, would you see that any changes in our comprehensive plan that we're talking about discussing comprehensive plan with the other alternative energy? Do you see any need to make any changes in the comprehensive plan?
I do believe it'll have to be addressed in that land use section, the current one that we're, um, out for advertising right now, um, because they're not addressed in that element at all in our comprehensive plan.
All right. And I guess the other comment I'm going to make is, you know, uh, mining, solar, wind, and data center, I think there is a little bit of a segregation between those three. I don't see the footprint and some of that stuff in a data center on the same level as a wind and solar plant and/or mining. So, but I do know that when you go to look at these, you know, having an opportunity to look at the ordinance, go to look at the comprehensive plan and make sure, just like we are in the other alternative energy, that we're looking at to make sure that we have our bases covered, so.
Any more discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, so, in the, looking at trying to put together an ordinance, have you actually met with the stakeholders, the power companies? So, are you working together? Are they involved?
Yes.
Which ones have you talked with?
Uh, we had a conference call on Friday with West River Electric, uh, Mr. Bruner, and SDN Communications.
Did they have any comments relative to this ordinance, seven-nine-seven?
Yes, uh, I received comments yesterday.
And what were those?
Nothing significant. I mean, there's the changes that are reasonable.
I just wondered if you could rewrite this and just not use the word moratorium, but still express the same statement. The six-month, that just doesn't sit good with me. I'm sorry.
Chair.
You done, Mr. Roskin? I'm done. Mr. Hatcock.
To approve ordinance number seven-nine-seven, a temporary zoning ordinance regulating data centers in the Pennington County zoning district.
Do we have a second? No second. Motion dies for lack of a second. Um, so we move on to item number thirteen. Thank you, Ms. Brittany, Mr. Jason. And we move to item number thirteen. Regular Agenda, Public Agenda Submission Request.
Starts at ten-thirty.
John Barkley, Jr.
Looks like we can't go to that until ten-thirty.
We'll take a, uh, break till ten-thirty?
Chair, you can either take a break till ten-thirty or move something up, whichever you prefer.
I'd say we just take a break.
Let's take a break because Mr. Dur needs a break. Let's take a break because Mr. Dur needs a break. Okay, we're ready to roll. So we're, we're back from our break. And we had a little house cleaning motion to make on.
Yeah.
Go forward.
Under the item from planning and zoning, I'm going to make a motion to deny ordinance number seven ninety-seven A, temporary zoning ordinance regulating data centers in all Pennington County zoning districts.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post, same son. So we have order one, motion carries, we'll move on to item number fourteen? Oh, no, number thirteen, I'm sorry. This is the planning, regular agenda, public agenda submission request for John Barley Jr. Is John here? John, come forward. It's your time. Sorry, we took you over a few minutes.
Nope.
Your time is valuable.
I have more time than money.
I think you're, well, I think we're joining our ranks all together here, my friend.
Um, I don't know where you want me to go. Do you want me to read this or have you read it?
No.
Want me to read it?
I've, I, at least I've read it, so I would suggest that you just tell us what's going on.
Okay, well, in the valley, we have some pretty good messes out there. This here picture is in my neighborhood. I happen to have a hoarder. And then I have these people here who I think for the last year and a half have had people living in that camper. And obviously, now they've skirted it because they think it's a mobile home park or, or a campground. I guess I don't know what the deal is here. I brought this up to Dwayne Allen a year and a half ago. He did make contact with the people and they said that they were living in there. So he was gonna proceed with making charges against it and, you know, taking care of it. Obviously, nothing's been done. Throughout this time, there's been a lot of reasons why, he says it's tough to prove, which in my opinion, if you go up and knock on the door and people are living in there, it's pretty obvious. He doesn't have the authority, which doesn't make any sense because he's the nuisance enforcer. He, how can he do his job if he doesn't have authority to go in there and do it? I think these people are fueled by the next neighbor over.
Here, let me get you some help.
Okay. So anyway, you know, originally, that was not skirted or anything like that. I guess if people want to live in a camper temporarily while they're out of home, and this, this is the guy's son that's living in there, his, his son and his wife, for a short time, I think we can all say that you could have somebody stay in there for a weekend or whatever. But this has gone into it a year and a half now. Consequently, these people don't pay taxes. They bring in other stuff. Uh, that, there's another pickup there now that's the people living in the camper. That's their junk. There's my, my neighbor, the hoarder. So I think the other people are fueled by this. When they look at this, they say, well, what are you gonna do to me? You don't do anything to this guy. And so, this has been like this for twenty, thirty years probably. And, and Dwayne has talked to him and nothing's ever been done to have him totally clean it up. And I don't know if that's because he doesn't have the authority to do that either. All these things just don't make any sense. I, what happens is, if we go to that one. What happens in these instances and what's happening is, okay, so the people that are homeless living in the camper, they're bringing what few things they have left after they've been evicted from their house. So you have this white pickup up here with skirting or whatever, junk under it, junk in it, taking up room in my neighbor's driveway. So consequently, he takes one of his excess vehicles that's not registered, licensed, current licensed, and parks it out in the street. So we can't do anything about that. I contacted Jerry about that. Supposedly, it'd been turned over to Penny County Sheriff's and it's still sitting there. It's been sitting there since the third week in October. So, you know, I had gone to Dwayne on this originally and he thought maybe the county highway department. So I just, I just finally just started going down the line and expecting to get knows because that's what I was getting. Nobody wanted to deal with it. So the county highway department guy told me it wasn't his jurisdiction, it was the sheriff's department. And so now I've gone through all these channels and nobody seems to have any authority. And so this van's sitting out there, it does not run, it's not currently licensed. And it's, we, we live in a cul-de-sac. So I guess part of the point is because this driveway's full with other junk, we're gonna start letting people park their junk out in the street to make room so that they can break the law and have campers living in there. We're missing the whole point on this. In my opinion now, with this camper with the skirting on it, that's going to basically like a mobile home. It went from campground to mobile home. My personal opinion is that the county's losing out on some money here too. Because these people are living there like that, tax-free. They should be paying some kind of taxes. They shouldn't even be allowed to have it. That's, that's the primary thing. But I mean, let's look at this. It's not zoned for mobile homes, it's not zoned for camping.
Mr. John, we do have our planning director here who can maybe answer some of our questions. If that was my neighbor, I'd have some questions too. So if we could get Brittany to come forward and, is it Dave?
Dwayne.
Dwayne, I'm sorry.
And I've been in contact with Dwayne quite a bit.
Sure.
You know, and that's, that's why I'm here because I knew I had to come up here.
We're here to, we're here to get some answers.
I think it's important to say that this is not a witch hunt against Dwayne. Rather, this is probably gonna help him in the future, maybe to get the authority to do his job. We're, we're actually paying him to have a position and then he's not able to do it.
So I guess Brittany, I guess from my perspective, and I'm sure the rest of the commission can chime in, but without having to reduplicate or reiterate, if we could take the items one by one, do we have ordinances that prevent this from happening? And if we do, what is the enforcement? Is there something, I mean, I'll let you go ahead, I'm sure you're familiar with this.
We have ordinance one oh six. And so Dwayne does try to go out and work with these individuals to remove items from the property. When they do remove it, you know, it doesn't get sent to the state's attorney's office. The problem is, is we can abate these, but the abatement costs for these are significant. The last, I think, abatement that we got a, what did you get? What was it? It was like twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. That was our bid that we got to clean up one of these. Our budget has four thousand dollars in it for abatement. And I only have authority to approve abatements up to a thousand dollars. So if you do abate this and it does become an assessment on their property, then it, you know, the treasurer has to assess it. And then, who knows when it gets paid?
Sure.
And as far as the vehicle, it was tagged by the sheriff's department. Why it wasn't towed, I'm not sure. I can't speak to this.
Is the sheriff here today?
No.
Okay.
No, I can't speak to that. And as far as living in campers and things like that, Dwayne doesn't have the ability to, you know, stake out these properties twenty-four seven to find out. When people are living there, it's very difficult to, he'll go to the door and knock on them, but nobody answers them.
Right. But I mean, is it an ordinance that they can't live in it?
Well, you can't have, there isn't an ordinance that specifically says you can't live in a camper. You just can't have two residences on a property. You can only have one single-family dwelling.
So.
So it's a difficult.
Commissioner Dur, go ahead.
Yeah. So it would be, because again, it would be the same, just take it out where I live, out in the middle of nowhere. Otherwise known as the great area of Farmingdale. But, you know, on my property, you know, I could not have one of my kids come live on my property without plating off ten acres and giving them that house. And another one wanting to move out, I couldn't have them come onto my property and do this. I would have to plat it out per our current ordinance and have a separate residence unless you're getting an exemption for ranch hand exemption or the, you know, kind of mother-in-law living location, those types of things. So I did visit with Dwayne and Brittany about this a couple of months ago after we spoke and said that I do believe we can tow these vehicles. And when I was a deputy, I was somewhat infamous in Rapid Valley for tagging and towing. And so we can, that is our right-of-way. And so I believe we have the ability to go out there on unlicensed vehicles. Currently, we don't have to do anything to go tag and tow those. And so in the conversation, because we just talked about this one like maybe two to three weeks ago, and I believe it was your understanding that that vehicle had been towed, had been marked for tow. So I did stop out there this morning and spoke to your neighbor, Dave. And so I talked to Dave, who is, I believe, getting ready to head to the senior center. And he's the one that goes back, if you could go back, Brittany, to that photo. With the blue tubs. So that is his property and he's got room anyway to pull his pickup in there. He said in the last couple of weeks, he had cleaned out some of those toes. But admittedly so, his way of cleaning out the front part of that is to move it in the backyard. And so he moves from point A to point B. I asked him if he wanted to come here this morning because I wanted him to know that this stuff was being talked about. And he just asked that I kind of represent him. So he did confirm that the neighbor next door in that camper, that the individual's son is living in there and has been living in that camper. So he's like, nope, I think they have some family situation going on. But there is that father-son, whatever that relationship is, next door that you pointed out is living in that camper. And so there is, and we talked about it, but some counties will have a nuisance ordinance. And do we have a nuisance ordinance?
We do.
Okay. And if you, in the, if you don't have a nuisance ordinance, it's just in state statute if you go to abate that nuisance. And so these are things we talked about a couple of months ago. So in my mind, when you have a situation like this, you would file a nuisance complaint. And you would follow that process, getting back to their limitation on funding and the ability to go in and clean this property up. So I've done many of these nuisance and abatements. And what I did before was not pay somebody to come in and do this. We had the highway department go out there with their dump trucks. And we did it with our existing equipment. And then we hauled it at the landfill and then we assessed whatever that cost was internally versus contracting this out. So I do believe we have alternatives that we could do to clean some of these things up. And doing so, it goes back to the point of, you know, we have a code enforcement officer. You know, what are the limitations on that position that we have? And, and again, I can see the hesitation of going out there individually and just knocking on somebody's door. But I think that should be something that we should work with in conjunction with the sheriff's office to have these things done, knowing when they're identified. And then the next part of this would be if Megan could come up.
Megan Krueger with the state's attorney's office.
All right. So I know when it gets to the point of, you know, Dwayne goes off, and I don't know if he has, I asked him a couple of months ago, you know, he kind of went through his list with me as to how many properties he touches. And he's very detailed on, you know, his accountability on these properties. And so when he gets to the point, or it comes to the point that we have to do, we're going to do an abatement by nuisance, that becomes a civil action against that individual, correct?
Certainly, there's a specific process that's set out in statute. It's been a while since I've done one, so I'd have to relook at exactly all of the steps that have to be followed. But I believe that it's just a lien that's filed against the property. And then I think you just give notice to the property owner and as long as you give those notice requirements and you file that lien correctly, you actually don't have to file a civil suit. So our ordinance basically allows for three routes, really. The first route is to try to resolve informally, which is most of the time what Dwayne tries to do. The second route is to abate. That obviously is, as I kind of mentioned, that filing of that lien, giving notice, and then we go out and we clean it up. Typically, sorry, what the phone is. Typically, we give that notice and we do that on properties that have smaller costs for cleanup because of some of that cost limitation that we have. And then the third option is prosecution, and obviously, that's criminal prosecution. So we are kind of saddled, is not the word that I'd like to use, but it's the word that I have to use. We're saddled with that beyond a reasonable doubt standard that we have to prove the case by. So typically, when we receive a referral for our office to prosecute, we want to see a formal investigation done, just because we're going to have to prove this in court like a criminal action. Most of the time, I will tell you that Alexa, or when I was doing it, we tried to resolve these still informally with people, even through the criminal process. Most of the time, what we'll do is we'll leave jail time on the table to get that individual an attorney, to have their attorney help them and assist them and help them understand what all of the potential repercussions could be if they don't clean it up. And nine times out of ten, that helps individuals to understand what they need to do in order to get things cleaned up and what they need to do in order to come into compliance. A lot of the time, and this is just my experience, I don't know much about these individuals. A lot of the time, these are older individuals or they're disabled or they have, you know, some pretty significant physical limitations or mental limitations. And so we try to work with them as much as we can. Not saying that this is this scenario at all. I don't, I don't know what this specific factual scenario is, but that's what we see. So.
All right. And Brittany?
Mr. Roskin. Commissioner Roskin.
Um, he's asking Brittany.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Dur.
Yeah, just to follow up, Dwayne, I guess Brittany, maybe Dwayne, both of you. So, Dwayne, do you want to give your history on these two?
Sure. Dwayne Allen with the Planning and Zoning Ordinance Officer. On some of these cases like this one, as he stated, or we've talked about, it is hard to prove people are living in a camper. I do get a lot of the, well, it's skirted, the slides are out. You can travel around the county and see a hundred of those. People do store them that way. So on this specific one, I've gone up to the door numerous times, knocked, and no one will answer the house door or the camper door. I get nowhere with that. I have left notices and sent letters to this resident. I got a call from him, chewed out, yelled at, and then they called the state's attorney's office, did the same thing and hung up on him. So that's where we were at with that one.
And are you talking about the camper property?
The camper property.
Okay.
With the property that's on the screen, I've talked to Dave over probably a year or two. And with the way things work, as long as they're showing progression and they are making an effort to clean or to make it look better, the, I can't send it to the state's attorney for that because they are making an effort to physically clean up that property. In Dave's case, he does probably move a lot of stuff to the backyard. And he's told me he's moved stuff out and some maybe to the backyard. On that, we get into a private nuisance versus a public nuisance. If I can't see it from the road, I can't go behind a privacy fence, I don't go into backyards. I can't do that. I can, my jurisdiction is the property up to the front door.
So as I see these two situations, I mean, confirmed by talking to Dave this morning, and again, if you went out and took pictures a year or two ago and took pictures now, you're, I would imagine you're not gonna see much of a change. And so there is, what, what do we determine to be, you know? And so there is, what do we determine to be, you know, oh, I'm working on it. And I've been through these before over the years and working on it is I moved it from point A to point B. So I've got a spot to park my vehicle now. And then in three weeks, he'll be parking on the street, just as an example.
And that does happen with those.
Okay, so I would like to know what it takes for the county to take action on these two residences.
That is, I would have to speak with the state's attorney on that to see what are, what we can and cannot do on that. I'd like to address the van real quick, if I can.
Good.
Because that was a question that was brought up. When we're talking about removing vehicles and that kind of thing, it does fall back to the sheriff's department. When I referred him over to the highway department, that's during the winter time. The winter time, if you have snow removal and that kind of thing, then the highway can't have vehicles removed if it is a problem for snow removal. At that point in time, it was, I think, October, November, maybe. So that wasn't a possible issue then. I did speak with one of the sergeants over at the sheriff's department, that's one of my contacts, and presented that to them, and they did go out and tag it. The tag must have gotten removed, or the deputy didn't follow up on it. He's going to go and talk to me again. I made another call and to them, and they said they would go back out and readdress that issue. Whether they have or not, it's not my jurisdiction to do that because it is not on the property. I deal with everything inside of a parcel, inside of a property line. Once it moves outside of that, it's not within my jurisdiction to do something. That's why it has to be referred to either highway or sheriff's department.
I think Mr. Rosskinck had a question.
Start with Brittany, can you put that on rapid map so we can really see how that thing looks relative to the, to the neighbors?
Off plan, too.
My concern is, is that we know there's a camper, we know people are living in it. So where do they, where, where, where does the waste go and where do they get water? Because that's my concern, because that's just basically, basically, it's, it's not a criminal matter, but it's a real safety hazard. And I, that's, that's the part that I really think we need to focus on first.
Well, that was, Dwayne had brought that up initially when I brought it to his attention. That, and that was the reason why they could not live in a camper, because it wasn't set up for sewer and water and stuff like that. So I, I'm assuming they're going in the house, which is another point. Look, there's a house back there. I mean, you can't see it because there's all this junk. So if you're the father and your son has been evicted out of his house, you have a two, three-bedroom house, why is he living in a camper? If you care so much about it, why is he living in a camper? Why isn't he living in the house?
All the parks are turned, I'm sorry.
It would solve the whole problem and they could get their junk and, you know.
I was just wanting to make a figure.
Yes, that's my question.
Okay. Are you guys, are getting it quite his question answered here, because?
So this is the property with the camper on it, is this one?
Can you highlight it?
I, I just want to make a comment. I, I feel free, Mr. Barley, to get to this point. If this has been years, we obviously got an issue. If we got ordinances and rules that we can't enforce.
Exactly.
And you have to come here in front of us to get this enforced, we've got to figure this out. And it, it can't go any farther than today without you, with you leaving here without an answer, it doesn't make any sense to me. It's got to be pure frustration for you to live next to that. And to say that they're making progress is absolutely insanity. I mean, the, the thing is full.
Yeah.
We have, now we have a, we have a starting place, if nothing else.
Well, and I want to make sure that everybody realizes that this is, I, I realize it's a process, but I mean, it's taking time, but also.
We, we agree with you that two years is unacceptable in, in anybody's mindset. If we have rules and ordinances and we can't enforce them, maybe we should just eliminate them and just let everybody live like they want to. So I think that we're going to search for an answer here. I think we should focus ourselves on coming up with a solution now. We see the problem, it's very obvious what the problems are. You've got a guy living in a camper, you got, obviously, these people are hoarders. The mental state is not our issue, that is their issue that live there. We have ordinances, laws, we need to put, we need to start something in motion, Mr. Ross.
Well, I think we need a plan. Say, this is, this is what we're going to do.
We need a plan, we need to get, step through this plan so we can attack this. And at the end, if we got to civilly, do something civilly, we got our attorney, our state's attorney here, they've done it before. Then we got, then we got to put a plan that this don't happen again to somebody else. That if we get to this point, we need, we need to have a plan. If we don't, if we can't make a plan, we're going to make a plan, I guess, is, would be my opinion. But for us to sit here and continue talking about this, it doesn't make any sense.
Right.
Let's put a plan together and get this resolved.
Well, I'd like to say that part of these ordinances, they, they probably came over with Columbus. You know what I mean? This needs to be edited, new ones need to be added. These are just examples, that it's all widespread there.
Right now, today, we want to take care of your problem because, I mean, if I'm sitting in your shoes, standing there looking at us going, hey, man, I've been dealing with this for two years, I can't imagine that you aren't completely and utterly beside yourself. If I had to live next to that, I would have probably took matters in my own hands. So we, I think Commissioner Rosskinck had a good, we, we just got to put a plan in place. If we keep talking about and looking at it, that ain't going to do any good. So let's figure out how we can put a plan in place and.
Commissioners, if I, sorry, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, just, just a history of people living in campers, it's very difficult.
I'm not concerned as much about the guy in the camper, but you look at that mess that's sitting there, that's so obvious. There's no progress that, and even if this guy is living in the camper for years, there's got to be some way, if we have an ordinance, to just get rid of that ordinance then, or let's do something. I, I, we're all agree, we don't even live in it.
No, and I think, yeah.
Living in it.
Yeah, the camper and the hoarder house are two different properties.
Correct. But both of them touch on a situation. And so, I mean, what, here, so to take action, what I would do is I would start a nuisance abatement process, however you want to do that with the state's attorney's office, against the hoarder. The other one requires, in my mind, Dwayne going out there with the deputy sheriff, doing a knock and talk and going, are you living here? It's quite obvious you are. So if you don't get anybody at the camper, you go to the property owner, you pull the property owner with a deputy and go, we have a complaint. We know that there's somebody living in the camper, we have a situation, here's how we're going to attack it. And so I would just ask that both of these be handled and start that process. If it comes down to removing the property from, you know, the, the items in the front and/or however you want to look at that going in the back, because I do know there is civil action that can be taken on these. That if it comes down to a financial thing in the budget, then I think then we go back and we look internally and go, what resources do we have internally? Get a highway crew out there, get a dump truck, and start abating this stuff. And that's my suggestion, but I do believe you need to initiate on both of these.
Would that make sense that we can initiate that?
Yes, the camper is difficult, like I said, because I, I don't, I mean, we'd have to go through the courts to almost like an eviction process because you just can't.
But if he's been there for two years, if we would have started that process.
Pull them out.
Yeah, what I would do is just work with the sheriff's office, have a deputy go out there, take an initial complaint, send it up to an investigator, have an investigator put a case together with Dwayne, forward the case up to the state's attorney's office.
And it won't go, do any good to go there this time of day when people are working. Obviously, you're not going to get any answers. And it's got to be an after-hour thing when the people are there. I mean, you can knock and knock and knock all day long, they're at work.
Well, they obviously know what's up, they're going to avoid you.
One more thing back, there's another picture in here that I wanted you to look at because he brought up a good point. He says, well, I can't go behind privacy fence to look at anything, he can't go on the property. So behind my house, I have another guy getting started. He just bought the house and I'm, I'm cutting him some slack because he just moved in there. But we've already, this is the one right here. So this is off of my deck. And I offered for Dwayne to come onto my deck and to take a look at it. And he says he's not able to do that either. And so here I am, and this is what I'm going to be looking at in my backyard now and which potentially will get worse, I imagine. We're already parking cars out in the backyard, the driveway is full. So we're going to be talking about this one next.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rosskinck, you have the floor.
One of those that looked like that lot bordered at least three or maybe four lots. And what I'm thinking, if I was a homeowner and I couldn't get the county to do anything, I'd get a lawyer and say, you're devaluing my property. Because they are, right now, I can tell you what. If you put one of those houses up for sale, you're going to pull the value down because nobody wants to live next to that. And right there, it, to me, would be a, a civil suit. County could get involved, but I think the county should get involved as much as possible because
I think they should handle it, period. So that's why we have these, that's why we have, that's why we have attorneys. And that's why.
Got our attorney coming up.
We're paying all these people to do these jobs, but they don't have any authority. Or they're not working in conjunction with each other.
And I, I don't mean to interrupt you, I, I just want to explain, that is kind of the difference between a private and a public nuisance. So by law, the county is only allowed to get involved in public nuisances, ones that affect a large amount of people. We don't get involved in private nuisances, those are private right of actions. Those are civil lawsuits between neighbors. So when you look out your backyard and if none of your other neighbors can see that, that's probably not a public nuisance. Now, whether you have a private nuisance, you could certainly talk to a private attorney about that. But, you know, when it comes to private versus public nuisances, the state's attorney's office and the county can only become involved in public nuisances, not private nuisances. Because that's all that state law gives us authority to get involved in.
So Megan, would the other two, would those be public nuisances?
Well, so it kind of depends, I mean, especially the one.
We have ordinances that say they can't do that, I mean.
Yeah, so especially the one where there's a lot of tubs of stuff in the front, where you can see it clearly from the front. I believe that I've actually been driven past that house before. It's my understanding that we just received a complaint for that particular property, not the one where the people are living in the camper. But it's my understanding that we just received a complaint for that property as part of this. So most of the time, we don't go seeking out, and Dwayne doesn't go seeking out properties that are messy or have problems, just because ultimately, he's one guy and there are thousands.
I get that, but he's saying he's been dealing with this for two years.
Well, that brings up another point. We have five commissioners to handle our county, we have one guy to do the ordinances.
Right.
County-wise, that's just not adequate either. I mean, if you want to get right down to the brass tacks of it, it's ridiculous.
Mr. John, oh, did you, two years ago, did you make a complaint? Or this is the first formal complaint?
Um, I had called Dwayne and he actually filed the complaint because they admitted to him that they were living in the trailer.
Well, and so I just want to clarify, there are two properties, two separate properties. And I think the property where somebody is living allegedly in a camper, that is the property that we received a complaint about. As far as my understanding concerning the, the property with all of the tubs in front of it, that we just received a complaint about.
Okay, well, we, we haven't, I didn't file a complaint on it, I mean, because it's been common knowledge.
Dwayne's going to answer that. Have you had complaints on this property before?
On the one with the hoarder issue, I had gotten a complaint from someone else.
How long ago?
It's been probably a year and a half, two years ago.
So it's been two years.
It probably has. As far as speaking with him about it, at the time, he did not want to file a complaint about him because it was a friend of his.
Right.
So that changed, you know, I, this is the first time he's brought up that property, it was about two weeks ago when he brought me the letter.
And then Jerry, I want to ask you a question. You drove by the property today and was that car still there that the sheriff tagged?
No, I didn't see that in the street.
The van's still there.
Is it still there?
It's still there.
No, I just, the homeowner happened to be outside, so I just walked up to have a conversation with him. And then in that conversation, told him that we would likely have to take some action on his property to get this cleaned up. And so, very nice, you know, nice gentleman. And he's the one, Dave, that confirmed that somebody is living in the camper. And he's like, no, they're living in there, so.
And he told you they were living in there?
Right.
Okay. There we go. So do we have a, I said Brittany or Megan?
Or Megan, both of you?
Do we have a process in place we can put into motion to, to get this cleaned up?
So as far as the process that's in place, that's actually set by our ordinance. So we have a certain notice requirement that has to be done on these properties. And then once that notice requirement is done, and we give an opportunity for people to try to clean it up on their own. And to know that some of that has happened sometimes, and this is just what I've done in the past, sometimes if it's been a long time since we've had communication, I'll have Dwayne send out the letter again, just so that way there's no sort of question or argument that they didn't know what was going on and that they didn't know that they were supposed to clean this up and take action in order to clean it up. I've been speaking a little bit with Alexa, because it's likely that she or Tyler would be the one that's actually handling it. But what she would like to do is just have one of the sheriff's office help Dwayne with the investigation, especially into the camper property. Because it can become very difficult for us to prove whether somebody is living in that camper because we're limited by what we can present to a court of law, which means we have to have testimony, we can't just have hearsay, we can't just have people saying, well, I know that they're living there. We need people to say, I have seen them living there. And they need to testify to it. And so affidavits and things like that aren't usually sufficient, we have to have witnesses. And so that's where things can get a little bit difficult when you're talking about a criminal investigation. Now, as far as abatement, this would be, especially the camper property, it would want to be something that I would want to look at before I could definitively say whether abatement, whether it's a private nuisance or a public nuisance, I would want to look at that. Now, as far as the property with the bins in the front yard, I mean, obviously, everybody can see those. And so that's certainly something that we could send out that notice again and get that process started again. And then I can work with Alexa and Tyler on the process of either prosecuting or abating them.
Would that communication go through Alexa? Can we, can you communicate that to Alexa, to Dwayne? And then so we can assure Mr. John that we're going, we're going to work on this. And we understand that probably shouldn't have went two years before this happened and apologize for that. We're going to move forward, we're going to start from ground zero so we got, we can build the case. And hopefully, we can get it within the quickest realm we can to get your neighborhood cleaned up. And then maybe the commission sometimes should revisit these ordinances. Because if we have an ordinance that we can't fulfill, this makes no sense to me. I mean, we find plenty of room, we can't prove that this guy's living in it. Well, if we can't prove the guy's living in it, why do we have an ordinance? I mean, I'm, I'm all for taking that opportunity to give it a shot, to get him out of there. And then, because he's creating another nuisance for, so.
Yeah.
Whatever we need to do, whatever direction you guys get, I just want John, when he leaves here, to feel comfortable that we're going to follow up on it, we're not going to go two more years and just say, well, there's nothing we can do. Well, if there's nothing we can do, then, then the commission here needs to decide.
Mr. Chair, let's just go up to Cary Hills. And let's say somebody in Cary Hills pulled a camper up, they're skirted it. And they're going in and out, how long would it be before you got a phone call and something to be done? This, you know, I just don't, I just think something needs to be done sooner than later. And if it's skirted, then it ought to be, it ought to be on the tax roll. Because out of my property, if it's skirted, it becomes a building on lease.
It's a permanent structure.
So, you know, that shouldn't be that hard, the, okay, you're not living in it, but you can't have it skirted. I mean, I don't know.
Well, and I don't know, I, I'm not for sure, Ron, because it's been a while since I've looked at those ordinances. But I, I don't think that just having it skirted is sufficient to say that that's a violation. I think that people have to actually be living in it. And that's certainly something that we can look at, changing. I just know that there are a lot of people in the hills that skirt RVs, that they don't live in them. They're there only a week at a time. And so that's certainly something that we have to consider when we make any ordinance change.
Like you mentioned, wants a little bit of surveillance. First of all, if the sheriff wants to pick the car up or have it towed, that would really help. And then secondly, if they wanted to do a little bit of surveillance, I think they would prove that this guy's living there. I mean, they told Jerry they were, they, this fellow's been dealing with it for over two years. I think it's time we put an end to it, so thank you. John, are you comfortable with this conversation?
Pretty much, I just want to reiterate that this needs to be, these papers, these ordinances.
Right. And we will readdress those, John?
They need to be looked at hard and revised.
Brittany's, Brittany and mine, both our names are on the county website, Jerry. Brittany's, Brittany and mine, both our names are on the county website, Jerry, obviously, he's been in touch with those people. Um, don't be, don't be fearful of calling us, it's, it's at that point now where you've been very patient for two years, we're gonna get our attorney on it. And, uh, I mean, that's why you pay taxes, this is a whole, and if you look at it, it's probably a health and safety issue like Ron was alluding to earlier, so.
Mr. Chair, one more thing.
Yep.
Shannon, can you come up here a minute? So if I was this gentleman and I came to you and I pulled my 2025 property assessment out and I said, look, this is what I live next to. I, I think that property, you call it external obsolescence, it's, it's an obsolescence that's pulling his property value down. And there's two types of external, there's curable and then there's uncurable. That's curable, it just needs to be cured. But the point is, would you listen to him and reduce his assessed value if he went out there and looked at that? And he's, I mean, I think we could all agree that, that's gotta have some impact on his property value.
The answer to that is depends. Uh, it's difficult to, to prove that there is an impact, uh, on market value for something like that. So we go looking for sales of properties in similar situations and see if there's an impact in, in those sales. And it obviously depends on how bad the situation is.
So if you hired three realtors or just had them come out, realtors are professionals, they have to go all this certification, uh, licensing. And you, and you hired them or they just came out and said, look, if I list this house today, what do you think it's worth? And do you think, one simple question, do you think it'd be worth more if this was cleaned up next door? And all three of them said yes, I think there's a case to look at lowering the assessed value. I mean, it's just, it ain't rocket scientists, it's pretty simple, actually.
The answer is depends, I'm not familiar with the property, I don't know how bad it is.
Okay, I'm just trying to make a point. Well, I, and I have, every year when I get my property tax assessment and stuff, I was just there and talked to McKinstry down there about this, you know? That it's bringing down all our property values, our taxes are going up, but we're not really getting anything adequate back out of it when we want it, you know? So just like you say, it's just, it's part of the issue. Um, it's not an overnight fix, I can tell you.
No, I agree with you, John, and I appreciate you being patient. And, and we're gonna address the situation, I think the commission all is in unison here that if we lived by this, it would be frustrating. Um, we'll address the, the ordinances at some point, I think we'll put that on one of the upcoming agendas or something to, to address how we make it more appealing so there's not such a, a reluctance to, to, uh, enforce the ordinances that we make.
Give this guy some authority to do his job, that's what you need.
Yeah, I agree, otherwise, there's no sense of having him, I mean.
I agree, I don't want to see him jobless, but, you know.
I don't think that's gonna happen, but, but I, I get what you're coming for.
It's all, like you say, it's not rocket science.
Most of the time, ninety percent of them are probably better, we, Dwayne can handle and they'll get taken care of and they'll, you know, but they said, if nothing, if he can't handle him, we'll send Brittany out there and she straightens him out right away. But, uh, there's a few of them that, like yours, that lingered on too long. We got Megan on it, she's gonna get Alexa on it, Jerry's on top of it. Uh, you got Brittany and my phone numbers. I just want you to leave here with some sort of, maybe a hope.
I just had to get it off my chest and let you hear it, so. And I appreciate Jerry talking to me on the phone and stuff, I just felt like we still need to get it out in the open more, get everybody involved.
Hundred percent.
Things get done quicker, so.
Dwayne, did you have something in summary?
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Right, just in, uh, closing, the one thing that we have discussed in the, we are looking at rewriting the ordinance, we'd already discussed that with Brittany. Uh, the other thing that we are looking at and just wanted to mention to the board is if I had the authority to write tickets, that would be a huge deal. People will respond to tickets because tickets can, they're logged, of course. You get a couple of tickets, you don't show, you don't pay, it goes to court, it's a little bit better.
Dwayne, I think the commission and Brittany would both be open for any of you guys' input into how we should get this resolved quicker for you and so it's not, you're not, because I think what's happening is you're probably spending a lot of your ti- time on the same offenders.
I am, uh, well, just for example, last year, I think I had a hundred and forty-five complaints, somewhere close to that. I closed a hundred and thirty-four last year, uh, that were able to be closed throughout the year, so things are getting done.
Right, no, yeah, and that's.
But I still, I still have over a hundred open right now, because it's not just nuisance ordinances that I deal with, I also deal with building permits that have not been gotten, you know, people building stuff without.
I agree, I've, I've told Jerry not to cook those cookies.
So, so that's a, it's, it's, you know, it's quite a large thing that I deal with sometimes.
So getting back to the ability to write tickets, I think that's a simple thing. And again, you know, my days in law enforcement, two neighbors have a situation and it's a, you know, could be a petty offense or an ordinance thing and then go, I didn't witness it, do you want to sign the ticket? Sure, I'll sign the ticket, okay, here's your court date, file it, write the report, go.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
You know, I like to use examples, and one example, you say private and public, there is a mobile home out in Rapid Valley and the waste wasn't going, it was just building up underneath the home. Now, that's private, but somehow the county got involved and we did an abatement on it, I believe, and it, we paid to have that sewage removed. So that's where, you know, and when you say private and public, that's private, but we got involved and I think we created an, uh, an abatement, if I recall.
We did, and that one, because it's sewage, it's a health and safety, it's a little different than, in, in some instances, it was under.
Living in the camper and, I don't know.
Yeah, it was, uh, under a different.
Do we know they're not actually using the toilet in the camper, putting it in plastic bags and tape? We don't know that, I mean, it, it's concerning.
The one actually, that was the one in Rapid Valley, that was actually a court order. So that one actually went to court and it was ordered by the court and deemed that way. So that was a little different, it wasn't us making that determination, it was a court that made that determination.
Thank you, Brittany, thank you, Dwayne.
Thanks.
Thanks, John. We don't really have any action on that one. Thanks for all the input, guys, I think we got some more homework to do for Jerry. Um, move on to item number fourteen. I'm sorry, I volunteer you for all this stuff, Jerry, but you're just cooking them cookies, I gotta get you to stop somehow.
All right.
Item fourteen, items from chair, commission members, the time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns to the full board, official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Direction may given to bring items back before the board for future consideration. Does anybody have anything besides me?
Mr. Chair, just the, Gary and I did meet with, uh, West River, Rushmore and Black Hills Electric, just, uh, back and forth, just talking about data centers, so that was the only thing that we did other, uh, committee.
They're excited about them because they can get big usage out of them.
What's that?
Those, no, those electric companies are excited about them because they're gonna get it.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, we want to do it right.
Sure, absolutely, okay.
I think everybody's on the same page.
Okay. Well, my, my, what I'm bringing forward to you guys is because I felt that it should get into public arena before I just conversed with you individually. And I have three items that all three items, uh, are addressing the assessor's office, um, for, just trying to do some clarification and, uh, make sure that as we go forward that any interpretations that come out of the assessor's office are vetted through this commission. Because I think that, uh, there's been some confusion in the past, I've been going back in, I go back as far as, uh, you know, uh, back in two thousand fifteen when we had concerns about the Veterans Administration, the VFW, post twenty-two, uh, being, uh, having their, their, uh, you know, exemption removed. Uh, recently, we had some exemptions removed from, uh, from the, uh, veterans with their two hundred thousand dollar exemption. These were interpretations that were made out of the, out of the auditor's office, unbeknownst to the commission. And so some of the other issues that I see coming up, and you're gonna see come up personally for me and for other people, uh, any valuation, and I'll read it to you and I will share this with you guys, but I want you to start thinking about it and let the assessor's office start thinking about some of these, how we may approach this. And any valuation assessment of property made after the November one assessment date, which is sentenced by law, that your property is assessed by November one, cannot be retroactively assigned to a past November one. So once that November one passed, you've lost the opportunity to, uh, assess that property if anything that's been done to it, uh, to try to guess what happened. Cannot be retroactively assigned to a past November one and can only be assigned to the next November one assessment deadline. The second one I have is the deadline, the Department of Equalization shall use the same form as used by the Department of Revenue that matches the owner occupied application. Uh, we use a different form, which causes confusion and a little bit of chaos, as you witnessed from the fellow that came forward, completely confused about whether he should be owner occupied. The law clearly states, the owner occupied requirement will be assigned by ten thirteen thirty-one, thirty-nine, SDCL ten thirteen thirty-nine, stating the principal place of residence as defined by twelve one four. So those are clearly set in a law that says your place of residence, and you can read the law and I will, I will provide this to you guys, but I wanted to avoid any, um, like, uh, behind the scenes type of stuff, and that's why I wanted to make a public today. Uh, Department of, uh, is, assessor's office forms must match those originated in the state property tax division. And these same forms must be submitted to the county commission if changes are made to these forms. So the county commission would be the ones that would change any of the state department of revenue forms, any of their flow charts, any of their worksheets, that we, if we had questions on them and they needed to be changed, the interpretation would be left outside of one person or one office and the commission, who is utterly, completely responsible in the end, would have those, uh, the, the opportunity to look at it. And the reason I'm bringing it forward today on a, on a, on a chair is I wanted you guys to think about it. I will forward this email to you guys, um, and I will bring it forward to a later date in that format or whatever input I get from you guys, we'll, we'll make it an agenda item and, uh, and, you know, go from there. So that's what I wanted to share, that's all I had. If you guys had questions for me on that, I would be free to answer them. Or if you just, I'm sure when I show it to you, you'll probably have more questions. But you can see some of the confusion that, and I have concerns about specifically, specific people or specific groups of people being targeted, unfortunately. Um, and that's a concern moving forward, and I'm trying to make sure that that disparate treatment doesn't take place, that the commission, if it does, the commission vetted it and they're responsible, they understand it, so. With that being said, I'll move on to item number fifteen, meetings, committee reports, and we'll start with, I'll just go down it, it is, it's GD, so Jerry Doo.
Gary Drews.
Uh, SDA, CC, Executive Board.
Normally I have these all written out, but, uh, I can't figure out where I filed it, so I'll go by memory. So the, uh, South Dakota Association County Commissioners Executive Board, we did meet , uh, last Tuesday, uh, it was a good meeting, they gave me an opportunity to speak about the WIR, which we're hosting here, uh, May twentieth through the twenty-third. Uh, gave an indication that most of the executive board of, uh, state association will be in attendance at that also. Uh, and so far, I, I reported to them that we have three hundred and twenty commissioners from the fifteen states, western states that are, uh, registered to attend that. Uh, the agenda is pulling together and, uh, I think it's gonna be a good conference. As far as the, uh, commission, County Commissioner's Spring Workshop, that was, uh, very well attended also, had, had some great subject matters, talked about parliamentary procedure, open meetings, et cetera. Don't remember all of the, the topics, but we, we had about two hundred people in attendance at that, uh, two-day conference. That included, uh, commissioners, uh, this year, I think we have seventy-eight new commissioners in South Dakota. We had a hundred and thirteen commissioners, I believe, at that meeting and seventy-eight, uh, other county officials attending that meeting, so, uh, good topics, uh, good conversations. Uh, as Ron had earlier mentioned, one of the topics of conversation ended up being data centers, so it was good.
So the WIR, Jerry, um, Gary is, is, I mean, are you getting the support you need to get, move that forward, and that's a lot of work for one guy, um?
Well, Ron's, Ron's been helping, Joan's been helping, so, uh, uh, we're, I think we're on track for.
Awesome, great.
Things done, so.
Thanks, Jerry.
And I, and I didn't make the, the library board meeting yesterday, I had a meeting up in the northern hills over the noon hour, so.
That's unacceptable, yeah, that's just totally unacceptable.
Totally unacceptable, is that a motion or, uh, okay. So next up for bids here is Jerry Durr.
Did you get, oh, you got through all your stuff.
Yeah, Gary's done, yeah, you got them.
Okay, so I did go to the, uh, two-day Black Hills Defense Symposium out there, and this year's focus was on cybersecurity, as always, you know, great topics, great speakers, uh, you know? So anyway, it was a good, uh, two days of meetings, uh, and, uh, important folks talking about important things, so. The, uh, Alternative Energy Committee, uh, we met yesterday, was our second meeting. Uh, we have the next meeting coming up, uh, we're gonna talk about putting some things in, uh, for the, uh, alternative energies, wind and solar, that would marry up with, uh, the current mining ordinance that we have and taking that process, for example, the mining ordinance, uh, has to go through and wind up with the final purveyor being the Board of County Commissioners versus just the planning board. And then looking, uh, conversation, talking in there about, uh, when it comes to alternative energies like these, uh, looking at having any improvements of right of ways, obviously, we talked about that yesterday, about improving his section lines. No matter what it is, always comes in front of, in front of the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, but it was talking about the current, uh, situation we have where the highway superintendent has the authority to authorize utilities in county right of way, that, uh, we're looking at writing that, so that would change only for, uh, these, uh, two situations of wind and solar, that any, anything being put in a county right of way would have to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners, not allowing the highway superintendent to do that. And so we have a long list of some, uh, potential ordnancy rights, we went through our, um, we went through our, uh, process and talked about that with the board or our committee. And, uh, so anyway, we're making some good headway and getting some input on that. And, uh, the next one, along with some of the things we'll look in the process and marrying it up with some of the mining regulation, uh, language we have is, uh, looking at how that taxation for that alternative energy, so we're gonna have somebody speak about the taxation that comes down for both wind and solar and how that plays in the community. So anyway, it was a good meeting. Uh, and then Central States Fair, we had our board meeting last night, uh, first meeting with three new board members, uh, and, uh, to discuss the fact that the assistant, uh, kind of fair manager, John, did resign. And, uh, they're not going to look for an assistant manager position, they have, uh, already opened it up and soliciting applications for an event coordinator and feels the event coordinator would be a better fit for what the organization needs. And, uh, there is a retreat coming up, the two-day retreat up in Deadwood for the Central States Fair Board, I believe that's the first and second of May, and I'll be going up for that, so.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, next is, um, Deb, Commissioner Hattcock.
So I went to the Users Board, um, had a really good meeting, it's, uh, National Public Safety Week this week and a Dispatch Appreciation Week, if anybody wants to take them cookies or anything.
We have a cookie maker here.
We do. Um, pretty proud of that board, um, and what they've done. Uh, the South Dakota legislation update is they voted in favor for removal of the sunset clause that it had attached to the surcharge increase in, during the twenty twenty-four session. The ECC, which is our Users Board, was able to reduce the city-county contribution to our twenty twenty-five budget by eighteen percent due to that surcharge increase. Um, they are looking at full and part-time staffing on different areas. Um, they also have, um, some backup radios that are gonna cost up to four million dollars in the future, um, they're using their reserve funds. Um, let's see, the Badlands, looks like they want to not be on our server system, um, ending the contract in twenty twenty-four, but they actually extended it to twenty twenty-five, should be their last year. Um, we're looking at AI integration projects, a best practice trend with some of the things that they're doing, it's pretty exciting, some of the business lines and the things that it will help. some of the business lines and the things that it will help for efficiency in those areas. Dedicated call takers is planned to add dedicated call takers to leave dispatch phone and workload. Dedicated call takers would handle 911 administration lines and data entry. Builds an AC/DC success and overall efficiency. Telecom specialist role would be some of those part-time and maybe full-time. They're deciding if they're gonna bring some people back to do that, so they'd save some cash flow doing that. We're doing some training, and they also are accredited first in the state for the PISA. Again, very efficient and effective with the leadership of Steph and Kevin. We also went to the Big Five meeting. The Big Five meeting, we had the school minds, Brian, I forgot his last name, but a very good man, was telling us enrollment areas and that they don't really wanna do virtually, where he was in North Dakota. They did that a lot, and it didn't really work as well. He liked to be more hands-on. They have about 2,500 students. WGT, they're moving ahead in some different areas. They're looking for housing for their students. City looks like they're looking at a sports complex and some other areas. He's looking at changing, reconsolidating how he does his process. He wants a cabinet. He wants to be the mayor with a cabinet, which is fine. He's trying to find consolidation in areas of repetitiveness, just like it looks like we're gonna move forward on. School system, they're looking at maybe, and they're thinking about looking at the two-year term. School boards, just kinda like the city had done and the county. We've always had four-year terms since I've been here, but it just makes it a lot easier for them to do their job description and take care of the students and know the areas of concern when you're not having to run every other year. The school is down in enrollment, and they're looking at areas of how they can move that forward. Through that, we had a good meeting. Everybody was very... It must have been like two and a half hours of just things on that. So, that's a nice board to listen to. I think the main issue was, okay, you guys have been talking about the same stuff since I've been there back in the day as a chair. So, some of that, you just need to move forward, and did it done. So, hopefully, that'll happen, and that's about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hadcock. And then I also attended the Big Five, and just to segue and not repeat what she said, but the WDT has a interim superintendent, and I think they're on a search. Is that correct, Deb? They're searching for the next guy. They did hire somebody for the school board, a gal out of Nebraska. So, we were kind of excited about that, since she shared the same sort of, like, values that we have here. So, they're moving forward with that. And then I was at the EM Users Board, and Alexa, who was their right-hand person, who's been real involved and has... is leading the board. They have a plan. Dustin has a plan. He has gotten a lot of cuts coming across from the state and the Fed, and everybody not understanding what direction they're gonna go. So, he's kinda contingency planning, saying, "Okay, maybe these'll come back, maybe they won't." But in the interim, they're gonna not replace that position. And I stressed to him, basically from my perspective, and probably most of you, that this is a big deal for us, that what they do, bringing all the people together, is a big deal for the safety of the county and, you know, the surrounding areas when we incorporate, like Hill City, and all the coordination efforts that they do. If it becomes a problem where they're not getting the funding to be able to achieve that necessity, that he would need to come talk to us. He didn't foresee that as a problem right now, but I just wanted to let him know, "Don't sit there and let this fester and become a problem." But I just... I wanna go... Those guys really run a great show. My kudos, my... To Dustin and that program they're running there, those people, you know, they do good. Then the Planning Commission went well. The only... We had a concern about being scheduled on the same day that the department had a meeting was. I think Jordan handled that and took care of that okay. He's gonna change that and make sure that that doesn't happen again. There was only one thing up there that really was kinda controversial, and it had to do with the creek, and I believe it was Silver Creek. And somebody wanted to have campers and whatever, and they didn't really understand the floodplain there. So, we asked them to come back with a comprehensive analysis that said, "If we put people in there, you know, if we sign this and we put people in there, they're not gonna get flooded out." And then have an engineer stamp that, because there's a real threat to that happening. And the engineering firm said that they would visit with their client about that and see what would transpire out of that. But other than that, the meeting went real well. And I think that there's two positions that are gonna be coming open in June there that we need to start thinking about. But other than that, I think that the... That Planning Commission runs fairly effectively. I mean, I think, you know... But that's all I have. And then, oh, for all of us, the Victims' Right Week luncheon, comprehensive plan, view to 2040 public meeting. I'm not sure... Deb, you mentioned something about, what was this week is...
NPO. NPO, and I asked Jordan if he could find someone, 'cause you're gonna be gone.
For people that don't understand acronyms, what would that be?
Metropolitan Planning Organization. But I was gonna say Brittany or Jason could go if one of us couldn't go, 'cause they kinda know that kinda...
Perfect, 'cause I'll be gone on Thursday, so that won't work for me, but if you...
Come with me. I have a meeting. I'll have one of those guys go for us.
I just appreciate all the hard work you guys do. I just wanna say that. And do we have an executive session?
Yes.
We do. Okay, so, let's make a motion.
Good. Ron, did you give your updates?
Oh, did I skip you?
Well, I did speak a little bit earlier.
Ron and Ron, I'm sorry.
It's not gonna be a long, boring dialogue.
They don't want me to talk too much, 'cause you're sick.
I did talk to Jason yesterday and ask him where that Silver Creek deal was. And he explained the studies that they were gonna do. And he also said that they're gonna let the owners know that, you know, this... If you wanna sit there and spend this much money on engineering, you know, this thing, there's a chance it's not gonna fly. So, you have to take that risk yourself. So, I'm glad they're pushing off a month. I can certainly tell you that I've been up there twice, and I've got 10 letters. And so, I'm trying to keep track of it and see where it goes. You know, Gary talked about, you know, South Dakota Association of County Commissioners and officials, the two-day workshop, and peer. And the presentations are 45 minutes apiece, and they're professionals that put those on. I think I know it all, and I go there, and I'm just... It's awesome. I mean, these guys, they use all 45 minutes, and it's just... It really works good. And then you have a 15- or 20-minute break in between those. And this is where you really learn. This is where you sit down, and you start talking to folks about your highway problems, about data centers. You're talking, you know, you're sitting with a table with three mini ha-ha commissioners. And that's where I really think my big takeaway was, is just the knowledge that you get from other people that do the same thing, but they're just in different counties. So, the last day, I had the honor to introduce Wendy Simler, who's a property tax director for Department of Revenue. And, you know, I've heard Wendy... I've seen the presentation a lot, but the one thing she did touch on was Senate Bill 216, and didn't wanna go too deep into the woods, but just, you know, kinda where that's at and what some of the consequences could be, so that's all I got.
Thank you for attending that meeting. I know that I'd love to go to those. I just... I'm in the middle of a bunch of stuff right now, and I appreciate you guys. You're right, though. That's when you learn what's going on. So, do we have a motion for the...
I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
Second.
A motion from Dur and a second by Drews to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign here, none. We are in executive session.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion from Hadcock, second by Dur. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are out of executive session, so...
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Hadcock.
Yeah, just to note that Commissioner Drews is still alive. He just had to leave the meeting.
Yes, he got opportunity to get in a little bit early, so we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
All aye.
All the same sign. Motion was from Hadcock, second was from Dur.